Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the School District of the City of Dearborn regular meeting. Today is Monday, February 12th, 2024. It's 7:00 PM, so we're right on time. I'll call this meeting to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Trustee D'Ambrosio.
Here.
Trustee McDonald.
Here.
Trustee Mozepp.
Here.
Trustee Petchikoff.
Here.
Trustee Thorp.
Here.
Trustee Watts, here. President Berry.
Here. Next item, please.
Next, the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Ms. Amal Abdullah, Principal of Miller Elementary School, will introduce students who will lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for having us here. I am going to call up our amazing Miller Mustang students who will represent and lead the pledge. Rukaya Vati, Reem Daher, Mohammed Osman, and Khadija Abdalwari. There we go.
There she is.
Rukaya. Right here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job!
Well done!
Hamad. Hamad, you step up first.
They're gonna give you something. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. And I know, Reem, there you go. Good job. Rukaya. There you go. And Khadija. Thank you very much. One more round of applause. Thank you very much. And we are gonna break from the regular agenda. Next item, please, Madam Secretary.
Next item, we'd like to have the Kindness Squad come up.
So I'll just give a little background with the Kindness Squad, and I have mentioned it at a prior board meeting, that I received this postcard from the Kindness Squad. And then I went on the Miller Instagram page and saw the Kindness Squad. Well, it's even better when you go to Miller and you get welcomed with the Kindness Squad. And I think today, everyone got welcomed into the boardroom with the Kindness Squad. So I'd like our audience to give our Kindness Squad a big round of applause. And what a positive message. I've actually been promoting this with my superintendent colleagues through my association. So I just am thoroughly impressed. We know we have a lot of good things going on in a lot of schools, but this is something, I think, that's very important, just being kind to each other. So I'll let Ms. Abdullah, if she wanted to make any comments, and then we do have a video that the group put together.
Good evening, President Berry, Superintendent Maleko, Board Trustees. Really, if I was going to say anything, it's to tell you how proud I am of this group and the work that they've done. I want to thank Ms. Anderson and Mr. Winkle for overseeing this incredible group. They are my inspiration. They inspire me to do better, to be better, every single day. And, you know, look out, there's more to come. I also want to thank Dr. Maleko, too, because he has been extremely supportive of this group, and we really appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, so we have a nice video we're gonna play right now. I know I have a shortened version, using with the superintendents across the state, but we're gonna use this one right now, the longer version.
Kindness Squad, we're a group at Miller here, and we try to spend kindness and make students smile as they walk into their classrooms. And what we're trying to do as our main goal is spread kindness not only in our school, but around the community.
The amazing thing about Kindness Club getting started was that, in order for kids to show interest in joining the Kindness Club, they had to tell us why they thought spreading kindness in the world was important.
Kindness is important because we want to spread it around the school and also around our community, because kindness matters.
And so, Mr. Winkle and I, we got to go through a lot of really beautifully written applications, and we got to hear some really beautiful stories and reasons why kindness is important.
It's important because what I think about Kindness Squad is basically, it's a tree that spends kindness throughout its roots, not only throughout our school, but throughout the world. And that's hopefully what we want.
It's probably one of the best things I've done in my teaching career. It's been very rewarding connecting with all the kids. It's been awesome to see them grow as leaders.
Last year, I was in Kindness Squad, and I saw the positive impact it had on my school. And I wanted to join so I can spread kindness and put smiles on other people's faces.
Ever since we started the Kindness Squad, we've been making more ideas to make people have a smile on their face every single day when they come in. We want to make sure everyone's happy and feels welcomed and comfortable in our school.
The way that these kiddos approach spreading kindness is with energy. They get excited to welcome students back into the building. They love to smile at other people as a way of spreading kindness.
My favorite part about being in the Kindness Squad is being surrounded by good people and making people smile.
You want them to smile. You want them to think, "I'm gonna have a good time in this school," and you want them to feel comfortable and welcomed.
When we greet someone, it makes their day or their morning great, and they will feel like they'll be happy and they'll have a great mindset.
This is a goodie bag for new students. We want students to feel welcome, so we have a welcome bag for them.
When I was growing up, you know, there was always talks about, you know, how can we stop bullying? How can we get rid of bullying? And this seems to be such a powerful way to do that, by empowering kids to know how they can spread kindness throughout the school, rather than just saying, "Don't pick on people." We're actually showing them how they can treat other people with respect and how they can treat themselves with respect as well.
I feel like that's a really big part of Kindness Club, is just making people feel seen and feel important. And that was some of the things that we read on some of the applications, is how these students are very much inspired to make people feel important.
And we have a kindness challenge every day, and a reminder, a kindness reminder for them.
This is High Five Monday, so the Kindness Club has worked together to organize High Five Monday. High Five Monday is when we welcome our students by giving them a high five with this poster to show them how thankful we are for them to be in Miller today.
They actually react really happy. They're always smiling, or like when we greet them, they'll start smiling, and they'll walk in, and they'll get really shy, but really happy.
These are called Kindness Clips, and on them, they have kind messages to make the kids feel good about themselves. How this works is that you attach it to someone, and once they find it, they could forward it on and attach it to other staff, students, or even teachers.
But when people find it, they see, and they have confidence in them, that people like them, and that they know they matter now.
Today's kindness challenge is to make someone smile.
And remember, the school likes to have you.
Have a good day.
So in the morning announcements, we say, "What is the lunch for today?" And the Pledge of Allegiance and our Miller pledge.
I choose to be kind today and every day, to be kind with my actions and the words I say. I'll be kind and respectful and help others who mistake. Kindness is contagious, and I choose kindness today!
I think they got that in one take. That was amazing.
One of the greatest benefits of having this club is the ability to foster such a positive school culture and climate. This helps encourage and motivate students to continue to kind of demonstrate the core values we wholeheartedly believe in. Ultimately, I think what we want is to embed these essential skills that students need for the rest of their lives, not just now. And that's all we could hope for.
And I feel like just letting kids be happy is one of the best things and most hopeful things to do.
Great job, Mustangs! You know, I was watching these beautiful faces in front of me here as the children, the students, saw themselves on the screen. They'd get a little shy, especially you, Reem, Hamad, I saw you. But you know what? You should be very, very proud. You guys did a great job. Thank you to your principal and your teachers. This is awesome. Thank you very much, Mustangs.
Thank you. Just one more.
Yes.
This is National Random Acts of Kindness Week, and so our students wanted to gift you a book. Knowing that March is Reading Month is coming up, this was their way of helping you spread the message of kindness as well. So can they present that to you?
Of course. Thank you very much.
All right. Go for it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Share some kindness, bring some light. Thank you very much. It's amazing.
Yes. We always need a new book when we come reading.
Thank you, honey. Did everybody get a book? Thank you. Did anybody get a book?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Hold on, I have to compose myself after that. Okay. Superintendent's update?
So I'll just go along down the list, President, if that's okay. We do not have any retirements this month. First time in a long time. So moving along, I just want to talk about, it's on the agenda for presentation, but a very important issue on February 27th. We have our operational millage renewal. Mr. Wall and Mr. Mustin will be presenting on that today at the board meeting. I also want to mention that, you know, there's three different ballots that can be polled. One is Democratic, Republican, or a nonpartisan. So if you choose the, you know, the local initiatives, both for the college and the school district are very important, so it's important to vote in one of those. We also, just to let everyone know, part of the reason that we chose the February 27th timeline is because this is expiring in June 30th. And so we want to get this renewed prior to. The other reason is if we held an election on our own, we would cost about $1,000,000 to the school district if there were no other election going on. Because it's happening during the presidential primary, we do not have to pay any fees to the city clerk's office, so that's also a savings. And, you know, if, you know, we're confident that, you know, things look good, but we're not complacent. If, for some reason, you know, we would have other options for looking at a plan if it weren't to pass, so that's the other reason, it would give us some time. So we did not want to wait to the deadline and then, you know, kind of be stuck where we're making, implementing a plan with our budget. So those are the reasons. The other thing I want to mention is this Thursday at 6:00 PM, either in person here or virtually, we're gonna have a town hall to talk about the operational millage. In addition to that, I know a lot of my team, executive cabinet, especially Mr. Wall, Mr. Mustin, I know we have PTA President Nabeel here, we have our executives, we've been going all over the community, providing presentations to different groups, whether that be Rotary Exchange, Democratic Club, many other groups, anyone who's invited us. We've gone to multiple mosques, and we have more coming. And so we're trying to get out to as many community places, which we're required to do, and provide information to those groups. So the team's been working very hard, making sure we're getting out all over the community to spread the message and answer. Oh, slow down. Okay. Okay. So next, I just want to mention as well, I want to recognize this is Black History Month, and just to recognize the contributions of African-Americans locally and across the nation, we did have our Student Advisory Council that took part in community service projects during MLK Day to celebrate that day as well. And so our students are usually great at taking initiative, and we do send out information on different units and things regarding that. So again, thank you to all of our African-American people in the district. And just a mention of the board meeting, so we do have a couple of changes. The April board meeting is changing to Thursday, April 11th. It will not be on the Tuesday, and the reason for that is due to the Eid El Fatar. And on June, we also have a conflict. We have two meetings in June, so we've been talking to President Berry and communicating with the trustees. We've been talking about this for a little while. We don't want to risk it falling on the Eid, so it's the Eid El Adha, and that one is on June 17th. So we're just going to cancel that meeting because we already have two meetings scheduled. So that is why Mr. Wall, last month, presented that the budget would, presentation initial will happen in May. So we've adjusted that to accommodate everyone's schedule and to make sure we don't have any conflicts there. Another thing I want to mention under other is just that today, I did get a call from the governor directly about school safety, and she was happy to hear about us being ahead of the game with a lot of the things we're implementing in the district. That included a threat assessment analysis of our buildings that the board approved. We had a contractor that came in. They also did critical mapping for us. And the other aspect of it is the mental health and threat assessment. We have Mr. Salee coming, to board request. He is coming next month to talk about that, as we've increased mental health supports, social workers, psychologists in the district, counselors. And in fact, all of them have been trained in this model, and our administrators have been trained, and we're reaching out now to all the buildings as well to make sure we're providing that support. I did indicate that we feel very good about funding that we need for mental health, for also school safety, which is a top priority in the school district. And I also mentioned our School Resource Officer Program, that it's very critical to the operation of the district, working together. I know the board is committed to that. I talked about a few other things as well. Part of the reason I believe I was contacted is because my role as president of the Superintendent Association, so she was also asking for help to get word out, to implement some of the monies that may be available coming up on the budget. So I said absolutely we'll support getting that out through MASA superintendents. And I did mention an example of how everyone came together, which was last week. Out of abundance of caution, we did put Dearborn High on a soft lockdown. Again, you know, we put out communication initially, and then we did have the Dearborn Police involved. I know our team, for example, Ms. El Zayat did a great job working with Principal Jabril. Ms. Farage was actually in the building. We had multiple staff at the school, and we also, we don't want to mention what everything is publicly here, because it's about our tactics for safety, but we did start implementing some of the Alice routine as far as communications go. I do want to compliment Chief Shaheen and the police for working really well. I believe we also had the Michigan State Police that came and provided support to us, so there were multiple units. Again, it was done out of abundance of caution, but we'd rather do that and make sure everyone's safe, and thankfully, everyone was safe. But it did show how everyone is working together. I want to mention to parents that we can initially provide a communication, but until we get details and we get a handle on the situation, the emergency, the Dearborn Police, they will be running, and we cannot put out additional communications until we're authorized to do so, because our top priority is the safety of the students. And so we will work collaboratively with them on communications to make sure that information gets out as soon as we can. But the primary, you know, thing is that we want all students and staff to be safe. So for example, and we'll say this to parents, that in a situation like a soft lockdown, no one is gonna be able to get in or out of the building, and including me, if I'm not there. In fact, I called Ms. El Zayat, and she's, "I can't go there either. I have to follow the rules," because they don't want traffic coming in and out as the police are handling the situation. So that would go for, she even said for herself, but she happened to already be at the building. I know Ms. Farage was already there, but if they weren't, we would not be able to get in, because we trust in the police working with our staff to make sure students are safe. So we need the cooperation of everyone when communications are going out, to, you know, do your best to follow. I know it's tough, I'm a parent as well, but just rest assured that we have safety as a top priority. We are prioritizing this. The governor has recognized that by calling me, knowing that we are doing some things that she'd like to see us promote across the state. So, you know, more to come on that, but I got to commend, and I did at the city council, we went to city council and talked about the millage last week, both the college and our millage, and I did make sure that I thanked the chief and the city and the mayor for the partnership with school safety. And the last thing that I have is just, I want to congratulate our team, Ms. Farage and others who were involved with a $2.6 million grant. My kid's back on track. It'll help support math and literacy during the day and after school that we received from the state. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Now I want to make a comment regarding the Dearborn High situation. Yes, as parents, we want to know. We don't want to know what's going on, this, this, and that. It's like Dr. Maleko said, probably, we can't disclose information as fast as you want it. We have to wait, you know, the authority to tell us. But I also want to thank and recognize Mr. Jabril, Ms. Farage, and Mrs. El Zayat for doing a great job. We, they were communicating with Dr. Maleko instantly, giving him information, giving it to us. The board found out, then we were able to put out a notice out to the parents. So thank you very much, Dr. Maleko.
Thank you, President.
Next item, please.
Recognition and acknowledgements. Commendations.
Hello, my name is Arba Al-Jabari, and I am a student at Henry Ford Early College as a junior. I will be reading the commendations today. Thank you for having me here. It's a pleasure to be here.
Hello, everyone. My name is Payne Palmer, and I am also a Henry Ford Early College junior. I thank you all for having us here, and we apologize in advance if we pronounce anyone's names incorrectly. And without further ado, we will start with the district commendations. Commendations to SFE, Courtney Burrows, Jeff Murphy, Joe Adams, Emile Al-Khodre, Osama Badun, and Maila Harp for their assistance with DBS virtual K-12 testing. High school commendations. Commendations to high school senior Nassim Meshhour, who has now scored more than 1,000 points during his high school basketball career. He is the seventh boys' basketball player in Dearborn High's history to accomplish this feat. Joining Ali Farhat, Justin Williams, Colin Wickenson, Steve Moore, Bill Backonstall, and Jim Vanderhall. Commendations to students on the Superintendent's Student Advisory Council, who's been part of Martin Luther King Junior Day, volunteering at Fish and Loaves in Taylor. The students also organized a raffle at the high schools with proceeds benefiting the First Rehabilitation Center and the Palestine Children's Relief Fund. Commendations to Dearborn High senior Balala Ayen, who last year achieved his 100th victory in his high school wrestling career. He is the first since 2019 to achieve that mark. Commendations to Hassan Thai, who was named the winner of the 2023 Congressional App Challenge in Michigan's District 12. His app, Cyberverse, helps students learn more about cybersecurity with curated articles, lessons, and more. Thai is a senior at Dearborn High and attends the Dearborn Center for Math, Science, and Technology.
Commendations to Etzel Ford High School, which received the AP Computer Science Female Diversity Award. The award represents 1,127 schools nationwide, where at least half of the students taking the AP Computer Science test were female, or where the percentage of girls taking the test was higher than the percentage of girls at the school. The Etzel Ford students who took the AP Computer Science test last year took the class at the Dearborn Heights campus through either the Michael Berry Career Center or the Dearborn Center for Math, Science, and Technology. Commendations to Ford's students Talia Gregory and Sandra Girard, who scored a Division I rating on their solos at competition and will be moving on to the state festival in April. Now moving on to the middle school commendations. Commendations to Principal Sue Stanley, Principal Iman Ahmed, Assistant Principal Mohammed Abdul-Sala, Executive Director of Business Support Services, Tom Wall, and Director of Operations Mark Andrews for their efforts and support of the Green Schoolyards Project. The Green Schoolyard is a major focus in the Salina community, now with plans to expand the concept to other Dearborn schools. These green spaces support a child's overall physical and emotional health, as well as provide STEAM-related experiences and environmentally friendly spaces. Commendations to Smith Middle School for taking first places here in Dearborn's Academic Games Tournament. Special thanks to teacher Ms. Abir Savage for overseeing the event. And commendations to student Daniel Gertz for his superior performance in winning 25 of 26 problems in the competition. Commendations to Bryant students and teachers for participating in the Future City Competition. Future City is a project-based learning program where middle school students imagine, research, design, and build models of the future. Bryant students were not able to attend the January 23 competition because of the snow day, but they presented virtually and received a special award for best use of energy. Team members include students Amira Al-Hajwal, Julia Jiedman, Emily Montierth, Amira Al-Madari, Batual Hadi, Rukaya Martin, Rihanna Baze, Aaliyah Shigaden, and Ali Sage. This team is led by teachers Neil McLillan and Kelly Wischimer, and volunteer project manager David Bosell, an engineer with SEDAW Group out of Metro Detroit.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, acknowledgement of donations.
Good evening. The following donations have been offered to the school district. Acceptance of these donations are requested at this time. A donation of $5,000 has been offered to Dearborn High School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for leaders in the health community, including registration, hotel, and transportation. A donation of $50,000 has been offered to Salina Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation in partnership with Consumers Energy to be used for the Green Schoolyards projects. A donation of $1,185.20 has been offered to Dearborn Public Schools by the Dearborn Ed Foundation, raised from the Empty Bowls fundraiser to be donated to Blessings in a Backpack. A donation of $670.20 has been offered to Dearborn Public Schools by the Dearborn Ed Foundation, raised by the Empty Bowls fundraiser to be donated to Gleaners. A donation of $720 has been offered to Salina Intermediate School by Mr. Khalid Abdullah and Obad Maori to be used for PBIS student incentives and awards. And finally, a donation of $100 has been offered to Dearborn High School by Mr. Jamal Lawera to be used for the Dearborn High music program.
Thank you very much. We've always said that the Dearborn Education Foundation, local businesses are very generous to our district, but now we have employees donating to our district. So Dr. Maleko, please reach out to the other employees and thank them on your behalf and our, the board's behalf, too. Next item, please.
Yes, before we move on, I wanted to bring attention to the envelopes that we have. We have thank yous from Deval Elementary, and also from Woodworth School, from board recognition from last month, so we have some nice thank you cards, and we also have some delicious treats from Woodworth School. So I just wanted to say on behalf of the board, so thank you for that.
Again, back to, I was gonna wait for comments, but this is a good opportunity. I received a letter here that says, "I love to read very much." Very, very creative. Thank you. Thank you for, go ahead.
Next, approval of minutes. Approval of minutes of the following Dearborn Board of Education meeting. Finance Committee meeting, January 9th, 2024. Board Report 23-86. Organizational meeting, January 9th, 2024. Board Report 23-87. Regular P-12 meeting, January 9th, 2024. Board Report 23-88. Recommended action, make any necessary corrections and move approval of these minutes.
So move.
Support.
So we have a motion moved by Trustee D'Ambrosio, supported by Trustee Thorpe. Are there any questions or corrections to the minutes? Are there any objections to the motion? All right, please attach a unanimous vote. I'm sorry.
No, just, it doesn't do with the minutes. I just wanted to say something. I didn't jump in early enough when we were talking about the donations.
Okay.
And I just want to mention that tomorrow, in case we lose some viewers by the end of the show or the end of the meeting, tomorrow is the fundraiser for the Dearborn Foundation Board, or the Dearborn Education Foundation at, it's the annual Mardi Gras fundraiser. So if you haven't bought your So if you haven't bought your tickets, go online and buy them. It's an excellent event and a good opportunity to give back to that group that does so much for our students.
Thank you, thank you. Next item, please.
Special reports. Operating Millage Renewal, Mr. Dave Mustenan and Mr. Thomas Wall.
Thank you, President Barry, Dr. Maliko and board trustees. We are here to just give you another quick presentation on the operational millage. I believe David's going to start off and then I will be talking more about the financial and mill side.
Thank you, Mr. Wall. Good evening, President Barry, Superintendent Maliko and trustees. If there's any question about how close we are to this millage, you simply can go to our website, click on the Operational Millage portion of that site and it will take you to this little countdown clock, which is located at the bottom of that website. But also on that website is a ton of great information. And so I highly encourage everybody to visit that website. If you want to find out all the, all the details and you have questions, as Dr. Maliko pointed out, we're out and about in the district, doing quite a bit to fulfill our obligation to inform the community about this proposal that is on the February 27 ballot. And if there are any gaps that need to be filled, this is one resource, this website, or of course, you can always call our office and we're here for you as well. As I said, the Operational Millage Renewal, it is a renewal of a existing operational millage. It will be on the February 27 ballot. For those who may not want to take part in the presidential aspect of that ballot, you can just vote on the local initiatives. There are two, one for us and another very important millage renewal for the Henry Ford College, which will also be on the ballot. So if you'd like to go and you can just request a nonpartisan ballot and you can vote on those two initiatives, or if you want to cast your vote for one of the two presidential candidates, those wishing to seek election to be president, you can do that as well. That's totally up to you as your rights as an American voter. As we, our operational millage is, as we said, it's a renewal of an existing millage. It accounts for $41 million of our operating budget, which is about 16% of that budget. We want to just reiterate the fact that this is a operating millage renewal. This is not a bond. This is not a bond. This is not a bond issue. This is a operating millage renewal. Two different types of money that can be used for very different things required by law to how we can use bond dollars. Those usually are used when we are building new buildings, renovating buildings, along those lines. Very well, in the future, there could be a bond question on a future ballot coming up here in the next year, two years, or whenever the board feels that it is time to do that. But that is not what this is all about. This is a operating millage. This goes for the day-to-day expenses of our district, goes for paying our electric bills, our gas bills. It goes for buying books and supplies and computers. And most importantly, it goes for the salaries of our staff, all of our staff, instructional staff and non-instructional staff, those folks who provide support in the classroom and those who are directly in the classroom. And that's where a large portion of this operational millage goes. It's for that, for those operational day-to-day expenses. I don't know if I mentioned this is a renewal. I just thought I'd throw that out there, that this is a renewal of an existing millage that started back in 1994, when the state of Michigan changed how schools were funded in the state. And at that time, the way the funding formula worked out, Michigan, Dearborn was not going to receive the same amount of money that they were receiving, receiving before 1994. So we were allowed to ask the voters to make up that difference with the caveat that we had to go back to the voters every 10 years and ask them to renew that millage. They did thankfully, thank the voters. We appreciate that support. They did it in 2004. They did it in 2014 and here we are again in 2024. I'm not going to comment on my age, but I have been around for all of those. So I don't know if I'll be around in 10 more years for the 2034 millage. Probably not, but I'm happy, very excited to be here and be part of this millage proposal in 2024. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Wall, who will explain a little bit about how the mill rate is changing and how it's actually a decrease for this renewal.
Thank you, Mr. Mustenan. I've already marked my calendar in 10 years for David to come back. The operational millage is made up of two components for Dearborn Public Schools. The first component is 18 mills on non-homestead property. Those are the types of properties that are not your main household. So that's your small businesses, it's Ford Mortar Company, it's, you know, your second home, if you have a rental home, those kind of properties. That 18 mills is the same for every district in Michigan. So that is a component that has to be renewed for every district in Michigan. So we're no different than that. When Proposal A passed, we had a higher revenue source than most other communities, so we also have what we call the Hold Harmless Millage. That is specifically on your primary household. If you ever look at your tax bill for your own house, you'll see on there, Hold Harmless Millage for your own personal house. When we first started doing this back in 1994, the 18 mills has always been 18 mills and the non, or the Hold Harmless Millage was 6.85. So right now, we're currently, a couple of years ago, that got reduced down to 6.17. Now we're reducing it down to four mills. This is not an arbitrary tax. There's a state formula that determines the actual mills that we levy every single year. Right now, we're only currently levying 2.05. So it's much lower than the four, but it's based on the student population of Dearborn. We don't know if that number will go up or go down, but that's a formula that we have to follow to levy the Hold Harmless. We're reducing, again, reducing the millage from 6.17 down to four. So we're actually authorizing for future boards of Dearborn Public Schools, they can only go up to the four mills regardless of what the student count is in Dearborn. So it'll be a one-ballot question, the way it has been for the last couple of renewals. And if you're in support of the millage, you vote yes. If you're not in support of the millage, you vote no. Just so you make sure when you read the language, you know which one means what.
We'd just like to share a short, quick video. It's just a little over a minute. If we could just, if I could play that, I'd appreciate it. And I think that that would help clear up, one of the questions that we've been getting is that, well, the state guarantees you a certain dollar amount every year. Why do you need this millage? If that 18 mills that Mr. Wall mentioned, the 18 mills on businesses, if that is not renewed, the state does not give us that full amount that they're guaranteeing. They're putting it on us and every, every school district across the state collects that same 18 mills and says, "This is your portion that you need to collect locally to make up that part of that money that we're giving you." Let's play that video and see if that helps.
The Dearborn Public Schools General Fund receives money from a variety of sources. Most of the revenue comes from the state of Michigan via per pupil funding. For each student enrolled in our district, the district receives a dollar amount cited by lawmakers. Here, you can see a few different amounts we've received over the years. And here are the amounts with the portion from homeowners included. As you can see, this actually brings us up a little above minimum state funding. This system goes back to 1994, when Proposal A changed the way schools are funded. Since our district had higher funding when Proposal A went into place, we're allowed to ask our voters to make up the difference. You'll also notice, as state aid goes up, the homeowner portions go down. If state funding increases enough, the homeowner's portion will go away completely. If the millage renewal were to fail, we would not only lose the homeowner's portion, but the local business portion as well. The state will not make up the difference if we lose the local business amount. So we would end up below the state per pupil funding and become one of the lowest-funded districts per pupil in the state. To learn more about the Operating Millage Renewal, visit our website at dearbornschools.org/operating-millage-renewal. And remember to go out and vote on February 27, 2024.
Topic is spoken.
So the incredible team in our video production department put those together. And if you go to our YouTube channel, there's actually a series of short animations similar to that, that explain different parts of the millage. Just another resource to help people understand what this renewal is all about. A renewal that's being reduced from 6.17 mills as the cap, down to four mills as the cap. So not only is it a renewal, but it's a reduction in the cap and currently, we're only assessing two of those six mills. But the overall bottom line message here, big part of our budget, 16%, $41 million renewal, it's a drop, it's a reduction from 6.17 down to four for the cap on the millage.
Any questions? Trustee Petrov.
I don't have a question, but I just want to reiterate as well for people to understand the importance of this. We've been paying this Hold Harmless for over 20 years now. This has been something that has been incorporated into every homeowner's and businesses tax bill. We're not asking for more money. Nobody's going to be paying more. They're going to be paying either the same now or possibly a little less, possibly a little more, depending upon how many students we have enrolled in the district. But the one thing everybody needs to understand is, is that when we approved this more than 20 years ago, everybody understood that Dearborn was a district that deserved these finances. They deserved the best we could give to our students. And I would hate to see a misunderstanding occurring out in the community that they wouldn't understand the importance that these finances have to our budget in order to continue to provide all of the wonderful programs that we have available, all of the support staff that we have available, all of the opportunities that we are affording our students that is unique to Dearborn as a P-14 district. And I would like to just encourage everyone to think about that when they have the ballot before them.
Any other questions? Tom, David, is there any way we can put this chart up?
Sure.
Trustee Moser, you have a question? Go ahead.
Yeah, I just also wanted to bring the attention to the early voting. This is the first time that the Secretary of State has implemented this by the amendment of the voters from last election. So can you shed more lights on that, where people can actually vote early now in Michigan? And this is going to happen also for the November election.
Yeah, thank you, Trustee Moser. Excellent, excellent point. Actually, you know, absentee ballots are actually out right now and people are voting. I know the clerk said there are a couple of thousand that have already been turned in so far. But yes, nine days prior to the election day, people can go to the Performing Arts Center and you can vote in person, just like you would on election day, where you go in and you go into the poll and you punch it or write it or do whatever you do. You can do that in advance, nine days in advance, and you can do that at the Performing Arts Center.
And I also understand that there are now some drop boxes around the city. I've seen one in the South End. Some I think are...
There's five more that they have put.
So that's going to be very readily available for anybody to cast their ballot and turn it in.
And absentee ballots are already out.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes, just adding to that, and that was an excellent point. Thank you, Trustee Moser. Also, now what is new is you can register up until the day of election as well, which is new. So anyone that isn't registered and wants to vote in this upcoming election, you still have time, as long as you're 18 and, and able to do so.
Thank you very much. The reason I asked you, Mr. Wall, to put this up, is this is very telling right here. Again, like David mentioned a couple of times, this is not a bond. A bond would be a different discussion. This is our operating millage, our millage renewal. So if we lose, this doesn't pass and we lose $41 million, this breakdown right here, utilities, $4.4 million, you got to pay the electric bills. Technology, we're not going backwards there. Athletics is very minimal compared to the overall budget of $274 million. The only thing left is salaries, meaning teachers. So if we have to get to a point where we cut teachers, guess what happens to class sizes? Yes, yes, I'm seeing everybody's head shake up and go up and down. I know there's a discussion on the community that maybe certain people are not happy with the board or certain people are not happy with the administration. This is the wrong time to penalize the district because you're really not penalizing the district, you're penalizing your own students. So be careful. It's a very dangerous discussion. I feel with some of those phone calls and people calling me are not happy with, you know, where I'm at on this. Do not penalize our students. If we have to, if this doesn't pass and we have to cut most, it will be, the easiest thing to do is start cutting employees. We do not want to do that because it's going to directly affect our students. No other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item, please.